Yep.
Okay.
Super good.
Okay, so we'll call the Eastline Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting to order for April twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Called the meeting to order and for everyone who can rise, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, public comment. We have received. Nine, I think nineteen or eighteen public comments. Which basically all deal with the issue with our Eastline High School baseball field here at the Eastline High School. And I'll just read one because they all have the same, some very similar theme. Here's one from Stephanie Montagen. Channel. Okay, thank you. My, my. As a resident of Eastline, I support immediate funding to enable the twenty twenty one Eastline High School baseball team to play on the field. And I support permanent fix so that future teams may be able to use the high school field. Student athletes deserve the opportunity to represent their town and the Eastline High School on their home fields. And we, so we've received, I think nineteen or eighteen, there may be some more folks that have sent in. Comments as well on this. Just in the last hour or so, so if I apologize if we don't have all of them, if we, we will read those. If there are any other additional ones at our next meeting, we'll read those into the record as well. But we have received some very similar comments from Kurt Kazor. From Todd Donovan, Rebecca Hints, Andrew Salome. Salome. Good, thank you. And I apologize for murdering the names here that are resolved. James Chambers, Joe Ferry. Megan Suarez. Bob Sartori. Jeff Tambler. Dave Restart. Jack Biggs. Danielle and Christian Akas, Timothy Steamer, Tina and Stephen Conklin. Kristen Chantrell. Greg Ellis. Tom Chantrell. And we have a group that also submitted very same thing, Megan Biggs, Brian Brandt, Paul Bureau. Mike Dreyfus, Bill Hints. Dean Ling Hugh, Pat Mahoney, Picnataro Family, Max Russo, Annette McDonald and Lennon. Jared, Jared, Jared Bell. So, so how do you say that? Yep. Zalah. So. Well, Zokowski, yeah, thank you. And I apologize again for the pronunciation. And all those, all those comments were in reference again to. The Eastline High School baseball field and the support to fix that, to fix the field. We also received the public comment. From Elizabeth Mondello of Twelve Black Oaks Drive. And. It's a little lengthy, so I will read it here. In reference dear to the Board of Eastline Board of Education, in reference to the proposed diversity equity. And inclusion plan for the Eastline Schools, this plan was passed by unanimous vote. Of the Eastline Board of Education on April fifth, twenty twenty one. This means that this board approves and agrees with everything in the plan. Board allows towns, the board allows townspeople two point five business days to respond to the original plan. And four hours to respond to the edited version of the plan that is unacceptable. I strongly object to this plan. I have read the plan and discussed it with board members very check, checkly. After our conversation, a few edits were made. For example, they added their definitions of equity. Equality and the removal of the exact mention, but not the text references to Marxist critical race theory. I was soothingly. Informed that this plan is really all about inclusion, diversity, looking and able people. I believe he was trying to describe qualities and empathy of qualities of empathy and compassion. I agree with the teachings of empathy and compassion. I even agree with having a robust, really diverse teaching staff. However, that is not only what this plan is mandating. This plan will affect every student, teacher, subject, curriculum, activity, book, play, music, sports, test. Merit based program, new hire promotion spoken and written word in the public and in private. Ability to dissent and the dollar spent in this district. This plan is about the indoctrination of students in a particular identity politics belief that race and ethnicity. Are main drivers for all behavior. I reject that. I believe we should be judged by our character as taught by Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. And not what my child being taught that a person is anything other than an independent being endowed with individual rights and agency. This plan utilizes pseudo intellectual argument that racism is everywhere and in every social institution. That is unprovable, untestable, and therefore undefensible. Any single variant explanation for differences in people is an ideological oversimplification. Evidence of disparity cannot be used as proof of discrimination. Emotional stories are never a substitute for facts. Or the board definitions of inclusion, diversity, equity, racism are so vague that they cannot, they can be expanded to meet. Any possible situation in life. This will give the proposed DEI committees enormous power to change anything they encounter. I object to having these unelected and very powerful committees in charge of my child's education. I have no faith in this board's ability to control the racial elements of the committees. This plan is completely changed, this plan completely changes the goals, administration and purpose of the Eastline School System. Teachers will have no freedom to teach their own philosophy of which there are many in this world. And the students will be examined and pushed to conform and become social activists. The concept of diversity of thought is not mentioned. There is no protection for students or teachers' private or public opinions mentioned. Most of all, I object to the super, to the supposition that race has anything to do with what a person can think. This policy actually states that racism is a complex system of beliefs and behaviors grounded. In a presumed superiority of white race of, of the white race. These beliefs and behaviors are conscious and unconscious, personal and institutional. And a result in the oppression of people of color and benefits. The dominant group comma whites. Simpler definition is racial prejudice plus power equals racism. This plan has been through extensive drafts and revisions of that fact. That fact that they left this definition in is proof that this is what the board believes. I do not want people who believe this being responsible for anything that my child learns. Even if they remove it now, the fact remains that they put it in the plan at all. And the plan entire premise is based on the belief that race and ethnicity mean everything. I believe that Eastline should be aspiring to personal and individual responsibilities. And I also believe in the following statement by the United States Supreme Court. If there is any fixed star in our constitutional constellation. It is that no official high or petty can prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion. And other matters of opinion or forced citizens to confess by word or act their faith therein. If there are any circumstances which permit exception, they do not now occur to us. Supreme Court nineteen ninety, nineteen sixty-three, West Virginia versus Barnett. The freedom to not pledge allegiance. The prejudice and bias and authoritative authoritarianism in, in this plan should be horrifying to everyone that values true equality, scholarship. And a colorblind society. The, the, the plan explicitly promotes racism. It is disgusting. If you wish to join me in opposition to this plan, please contact me at EL excellence at gmail dot com. E L underscored excellence at gmail dot com. Thank you, Elizabeth Mondello, Twelve Black. Drive. And again, that's available on the board doc for anybody wants to review it. In the public. Okay, so that concludes our group's public comments. Moving along then, we have the minutes from our April fifth regularly scheduled meeting. For the Board of Education and would there like to be a motion?
I'll second.
Any modifications, corrections to those minutes? Like everybody who's in attendance. Okay, everybody outside? See Eric, yep, you guys are good, okay? Is, is Jill there too?
She is.
I can't.
Missing is Bill.
Bill, okay, good. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, staying, those minutes are passed. Okay, we're on the special reports and Jamie tells me that there's a first select, oh, there's a selectman out there.
I'm here, Tim.
Oh, good, okay. Okay, yeah, I can see you there. Okay.
Okay.
Hi Kevin.
Okay. At our last meeting last week, we set a date for a town meeting, actual in-person town meeting and the date for a referendum, an actual vote this year, not like last year. According to the town charter, we're supposed to have the annual town meeting on the second Monday in. May followed by the. Referendum no later than ten days after that, which has always made it difficult for. Absentee balloting and so forth with the governor's executive order. It allowed for us to make exceptions with the charter to make it easier for people to have a town meeting and then vote by referendum in person or with no excuse absentee ballot. So the town meeting, the annual town meeting will be on Monday, May third at seven o'clock at the high school. If we get beyond what's allowed inside, we'll do a hybrid where people will be allowed to join in from their computers at home, their cell phones, whatever. And then when it would come time to vote, although the only thing we really vote on is the capital improvement plan at that meeting because we automatically adjourn to a referendum. The registrars and town clerks would have to take a vote of the people in the auditorium and then go one by one to all the people on with the. On the computers and cell phones and so forth like that. So new territory, but we will be having a town meeting on the third and the referendum will be on the nineteenth. The reason the nineteenth Wednesday vice, usually it's on a Thursday, the twentieth is the governor's executive orders expire at midnight. The nineteenth and the twentieth, so this way we can have the referendum on the nineteenth, there'll be no excuse absentee ballot. They will be available within a day or two of. Setting of the town meeting, they can be picked up or requested by the town, from the town clerk's office. And again, this is a change, no excuse, you can come in, pick it up, vote or have it mailed to you and you can mail it back because there'll be a little over two weeks. I, I think it's sixteen days by ten, so that'll be an opportunity for that. Moving on, Memorial Day Parade had been canceled, they're relooking at it now and it looks like we'll probably have it. I talked to Steve Mansfield from Ledlight, the director today, the health director. He said he didn't see any problem with it, so they're going to relook at that. Some of the things. Changing on May first. With the governor's orders for COVID. All restaurants, recreation venues will be allowed to stay up until midnight, bars with no food, which would be the Niantic Public House. They can open up now, but for outdoor only without the food and the eight person per table restriction will be lifted for outdoor only. So that's, you know, for the restrictions as of May nineteenth, basically all remaining restrictions for outdoor activities. And indoor masks will continue, but DPH will issue further guidance and recommendations for indoor and outdoor events at that point. And the Miracle League Field is supposed to have its first weekend this Sunday, but because of mother nature, they had to pull it off, put it off another week. And finally, most of you know, it's seven o'clock tonight, the, there'll be a public hearing on the budget adopted by the Board of Finance. They'll explain to it and modest, very modest mill increase, but I'll leave that for. The Camille Alberti and the Board of Finance, so that's it.
Good. Thanks Kevin, any questions for Kevin?
No, thank you.
Yep, it's good, okay. All right, I think we do have a high school representative, I thought I saw Grace.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Hi, um, well, I'll start off with something that has been. A little bit of a stressor for some high schoolers and some of the teachers. So I think that. Finding time for clubs to me has been something that's causing a little bit of stress. But I think that, like, we do have designated times on Wednesdays to meet with clubs. But I know that a lot of clubs, like, there's only a certain amount of time and I know that a lot of clubs try and meet. At this time, and so students are either choosing which clubs to go to or they're meeting after school and a lot of kids have sports and everything. And I think that for the end of this year, it's. Students and teachers have been finding ways to get around this and, and have been finding times to meet with clubs that work for a lot of the club members. But I know that. At a few, at a board of ed meeting that happened a few. Weeks ago, we were talking about. If this would be a good idea or not to continue like this schedule for future years. And I know that it's just, just the club aspect of it would be something to consider. Trying to either find times for clubs to meet if we continue this for future years or. Just having that same lunch for all students in future years, so they can also meet during that lunchtime. But besides that, on a positive note, the senior prom is planned for June twelfth. But future plans haven't been solidified yet, but it's exciting for a lot of the seniors to know that. They're at least going to have some type of prom by the, the middle of June. And then also. Diversity Club did put together a video that was shown in advisory. And it addressed discrimination and also promoted inclusion. And it definitely prompted conversation in advisory. About inclusion, and I think that this just demonstrates that students do want to see change and are willing to facilitate and have these conversations. And I know that Satie had a little bit more to say.
Hi, so for, on a sports note. Spectators are now allowed to attend the events, which I think everyone is excited about. On the junior class is still trying to figure out a socially distant activity for the class to do in place of a prom. However, we finalized a fundraiser with the dinosaur place for mini golf, which should be a great fundraiser. And lastly, Spirit. For the last week of May with changes due to COVID. Including a virtual pep rally, so I think everyone's excited about that.
So that was the last week of May? I think so.
You said last week of May, right?
Yes, the last week of May. Yeah.
Wow. Yeah, very good, excellent. Any questions for our high school representatives?
No, but thank you girls.
Yeah. Oh, sure, go ahead Kate. Oh, I'm sorry, Eric.
Hi, thanks, thanks, Satie and Grace. I actually have a few questions. First, so it sounds like seniors are having a prom, but juniors are trying to figure out something different. Is there any reason why the juniors can't also have a prom? Or.
So I.
Do you have any more details on that?
Yes, so I'm actually due to the lack of fundraising from our sophomore year, which would have bumped up all of our fundraising opportunities and all the money in our class account. We were actually planning on having prom at the high school or, I think it was at the Niantic Sportsman Club because. A poll with that, so it would have been low money and it would have worked out, but due to like COVID restrictions and such, we just thought it would be easier. And we put out a poll to the class to see whether or not people would even want to do anything because at the moment, the only thing that would be like possible to do would be doing something on the turf like games and stuff like that. But obviously there would be no food and it would all have to be socially distant. So we wanted to see if it was worth it for the class and if they were willing to. And everyone seemed to be pretty okay with that. And based off of the Senate, everyone would like to do something at least to say that we had something prepared. So that was where the no junior prom came from. I hope that helped.
It does. I, I mean, I guess if there's, and this is probably a different discussion, but I guess Deb, if there's anything from a board of ed that we can do to help the junior class, I can't speak on behalf, I'll speak on behalf of myself. But I would think if there's something we can do, the circumstances. Kind of COVID led to, it sounds like that led to not having enough money to do some things. And then we have the other restrictions and everything else. But if there's anything we can do to make sure that they have something, I think that's important to try to get back to normal or some sense of normalcy. My other question is now that you guys have been back five days a week for three weeks or four weeks or so, can you just give an update on how that's going? Do you feel like your classes are really picking up speed and the learning's better and just in the social interaction? So any update you can give us on the thought, kind of being back five days a week and how that's going?
Sure, I think the classes are definitely moving forward at a quicker pace, just not having the stress for the teachers of whether there's a lot of zooming or not. And trying to balance it all out with virtual worksheets and such. So I definitely think that everything is moving faster and in a positive way. Um, I. Stress that came along with it, just because of like the new sports that were also starting at that time, plus all the schoolwork. But I think that everything evened out almost about now, now that it's been for a while. I don't know if Grace has anything else to say about that.
I think we lost Grace.
I think she is off, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and thanks, thanks, Satie. And, and last question, it, on how are our APs, are we, is everyone else, is that moving along okay?
So APs are starting next week and obviously there's a lot of stress that comes along with that. I, I've heard a lot of different things, mostly regarding the stress levels of the students. And it's mainly, the main point was just that we're finally getting back to five days a week, classes are picking up, tests are picking up. It's not online anymore and there was. Abilities. There were certain flexibilities that came along with that and now everything is back into full run and then they're, oh, it's AP tests now. So obviously there's going to be a lot of stress that comes along with it plus COVID, but I mean, I, I don't want to speak too much. But yeah, that's, I think, where everyone is about at right now.
Great, thanks, Satie.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I just want to.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, Satie, I just wanted to caveat on Eric, so if there's anything that we can help with, I think that that. Would, should be extended for sure to help the kids to navigate and. Also, what about McCooks? I mean, McCooks is open, I mean, it's open air, I mean, there might be some options with that or.
Yeah.
Have the pavilion, I'm just trying to throw some ideas out, I mean, I, I don't.
We've definite. There's many ideas that have been shot around. I think that Ms. Kelly can talk about this too, but I think the reason that the McCook's idea wasn't a possibility was due to like the security aspects of it. And not being able to contain like the student body, whereas like in a four surrounding wall place, it would be easier security wise and I don't think, yeah.
Yeah, there's some limitations with that.
Yeah.
All right, but yeah, listen, if there's something that comes up that we can help with, that we navigate you, please reach out.
Good, excellent, anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Thanks, thanks, Grace.
Okay, that brings us to our discussion action items for the evening and. Just because again, we're under a little bit of a time constraint here because we want to hopefully bring our meeting to a close. A little bit before seven o'clock so that those of us that wish to participate or join in the. Or a public hearing, the Board of Finance is holding at seven o'clock, we can do that. So toward that and Jeff and I kind of. Moved the agenda around a little bit differently than we typically see. To kind of put some, some items up front, which are pretty straightforward and then kind of move the items that we might want to talk about, you know, get bogged down with. Toward the, toward the end of the meeting. So with that, we'll go to our. First discussion actions and this has to do with policy. We have four policies that are up for their second reviews. Jamie, did you want to?
So this policy is a second reading and is a deletion of a policy that is in other policies. So I don't know, I'm assuming we haven't heard anything.
Nope.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? On this?
Yeah, just. Don't.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested deletion of board of ed policy sixty-one, twenty-one, one equal education opportunity.
Any, any further discussion on that? Okay, everybody all set, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? Anybody want to abstain? Okay, that passes and move on to the next one.
All right, so this is the second reading of fourteen eleven Community Relations Law Enforcement Agency. This policy was written in nineteen ninety-three and hasn't been touched since. So we made some much needed updates to it and some scaling back because it was verbose and now you have what you have. Has anything you want to comment on? Online, Joe, Eric.
Nope.
All right, I would like to make the motion. To approve the suggestive revision of board of ed policy fourteen eleven, Community Relations Law Enforcement Agencies as presented. I'll second.
Good, any further discussion on that one? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anybody oppose? Anybody abstain?
They roll.
Okay, good, then that passes and we're on to the third one.
All right, this third one is also a deletion, it is embedded in other policies, this is the deletion of policy five-one, four-one, student welfare. Comments, questions, suggestions? I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested revision of board of ed policy five-one, four-one, student welfare.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? Anybody abstain? Okay, that passes unanimously, and the last one?
All right, this last one is a second reading of policy fifty-one, forty-one, two-three-one, students psychotropic reviews. This policy was last updated in two thousand and one. We made some much needed changes in the language to make it more streamlined and more suggestive of our practices and beliefs and. Comment suggestions? So I would like. To make a motion to approve the suggested revision of board of ed policy five-one, four-one, two-three-one, students psychotropic, psychotropic reviews.
Okay, and further discussion on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? Nope, okay, that passes unanimously. And thanks, Jamie. We'll move on to our next items, which is an annual event that we do. And that is to. Adopt the proposed healthy food certification statement. Food option and Jeff, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, let me give Mr. Urban some airtime, our food services director is here to, to just kind of give you a quick overview of what this is each year and our approval, so.
Hello, so everybody, this is the same. Certification that the state makes us renew every, every school year. This year, they were so nice to combine the waivers. This year, they were so nice to combine the waivers into one waiver. So you don't have to say the same waiver three times over again. So it's down to two votes. And the basic information of it, it's it was guidelines that they passed in the state of Connecticut. And if we follow them, we get a little extra bonus money with our student reimbursements for free and reduced lunch and regular lunches, which are now everybody free at this time. And um just a sidebar in that, uh the the USDA has made everybody free through two thousand twenty-two. So um next school year will be free for all students. So this uh
Wow, all year.
So this will add a this will add a little bit onto that reimbursement. And it uh just gives us a basic guidelines of what we should be doing as far as a school district, as far as fundraisers and uh sales at sporting events and all those type of things. That's why we have the waivers. So if, say, the senior dance or prom wants to have real, you know, regular drinks and regular snacks, they can do that without having to follow the state guidelines. But during the school day, we have to follow all the state and federal guidelines to be eligible for that, those extra funds.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, all right. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section ten two one five F, the Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standard during the period of July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations or groups.
Okay. There was a motion, does somebody want to second that? Candace seconds it. Any more discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody oppose? Anybody want to abstain? And that passes unanimously. And we're on to the next statement, yeah.
Okay, the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverage is not listed in sections ten two two one Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale and connection with the event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from the vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer fans, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location being where the event is deemed held.
Okay, that's a motion. Do you want to second that? Candace seconds the motion. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Does anybody wish to abstain? And that passes unanimously. Okay, very good, thanks, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we'll move on to some more less uh administrational items, I guess. Uh the next item up is for discussion, and that's the East Lime High School baseball field, which I drove by on my way here and whoa.
Yeah, it's um it it's still, yeah, and you can see the spots. Um whatever reason, this this year, it just it it took a rough uh a rough toll. Little history first, why don't we back up to, we did some research. We talked to a couple of different folks that were part of this process um years ago when the field, you know, the work had gone into it. And that was some adding fill-in and trying to fix, you know, some problems at the time, which was back in around two thousand and eleven, back into board meeting minutes. You just find it. We did, we found, yeah. So around two thousand and eleven, the process started to rectify the issue. It was about an eighty thousand dollar venture, which was put into capital. And then um that was completed where they added all the fill in the left field uh to kind of raise it up and help with some of the drainage by two thousand thirteen. So two thousand and twelve is really pretty much the year of um no baseball, you know, on the field. There's a work to rectify the the issue. Um not casting any blame on anybody or, you know, since that time, it has continued to have some drainage issues. And I don't know who was part of the process, but um that's where we're, you know, as each year has gone on, I think things have progressively gotten a little bit worse. I think the elementary school projects kind of took over for a couple of years um where we didn't do anything. We, you know, each year, I know that uh the coaches have come to me. We've had some parents that have come to me, you know, it's it's the field is always wet. Um we can't get on it in the beginning of the season. Things seem to dry out. They're able to get onto the field and play the the last few games. Um and then it's used over the summer uh quite a bit uh by, you know, some outside outside venues. And then the cycle continues. But we haven't gone back to rectify the ongoing issue of the drainage and proper drainage. So um Chris Lund is on the call this evening as well, and and he can chime in on this too. But um a core sampling of the field has been taken. We have not gotten the results back. Because hopefully, maybe we'd have the results back by now, but we don't. So we need to, number one, find out what we're dealing with, with uh what's underneath um the surface of of that outfield. Uh once we have that information, I think then we can come back to the table and say, okay, what options are we looking at? Um and what fixes are required to get this field back to, you know, a a playing field? It's not fair to the kids. It's been going on for years and it's time to to remedy it in some capacity. Um and there's a a lot of push for discussion around, you know, re-siding, redoing and re-siding uh up to, you know, putting in turf uh and using it as a multipurpose uh field, which, you know, would benefit, you know, many different groups. Um right from, you know, baseball, other sports, lacrosse, band could use it. So there's there's some some definite options there as well. Obviously, that comes with a price tag. But nonetheless, something needs to to be done. Mr. Lund, was there anything else that you gathered, you know, today after our conversation this morning? And then we can talk about the grub issue too, which has really plagued it for some reason.
Well, I think that's all tied together, but at least to answer the first question that probably everybody was wondering, when are we supposed to get the results? And I think it's at least another week, um because they're, they could do some of the characterization within the shop itself, but they're sending it out for a chemical analysis. And then, of course, they do the nutrient analysis as well as the soil classification. So we're probably at least another week out. They took approximately twenty samples of the entire field, um a couple of the infield, just to have them available for comparison. And then they went from right to left out in the outfield. And basically, what they found is as you go from right to left, the the field's properly constructed in right field and you get good results, what you would expect. And as you got into the areas that have been graded and filled later on, um there's a much thicker low layer of polyclay, you know, just for now, without having proper characterization. As was expected, whatever show was placed out there seems to have been problematic. And I think we're all sort of aware of that. So at least another week of uh waiting for the results. As far as the grubs, uh you know, there was a lot of grub damage this year, a lot of additional damage to the field. Uh I think there's uh an issue there with the vendor that I have to deal with. But also, I think the other problem we had last summer is you'll remember last spring, a year ago, was very wet. And then from the end of June until almost September, we had almost no rain. And as you may be aware, there is no irrigation for the field. Uh we can water the infield. Uh most that's done by hand, but there is no installed irrigation. So then on top of the insect damage that we had, we also had very dry season, which without the insects, probably would cause some additional damage to the field this year. So uh any long-term solution for the field, I think, should consider, you know, how we would keep it watering. That's about all I have.
Chris, just because the the same grub application was put on as had been done in previous years, correct? Through the
Uh it was, and actually, the vendor that we used, um they did both of the backfields and the baseball field the same day. I'll say allegedly at this point, um because we had, if you go up to the top fields, you see a couple of spots that, you know, sort of in the corners where you'd expect maybe the equipment was making a tight turn and might have missed a little bit, you know, spotty here and there. But overall, the fields look good, but then you get down to the baseball field and uh something happened there.
We wonder, yeah.
Yeah.
So um Chris or Jeff, um will, as you get the analysis done and all this stuff, I I will, we have two things, I guess, is 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 there anything that can be done for this year in the short term? That cost and and what's the timeframe for that? Uh and then and then further would be, or longer term would be to say, and so then what should we do to fix this, to fix it for 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 sure?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. And I know, Chris, because I know you're gonna say the same thing I'm gonna say.
You know, we've had, we've looked at a couple, what what are the possible short-term fixes? You know, uh you know, some people have approached me and said, well, let's just throw grass seed down. And of course, as I said, you know, and you can look at the weather forecast. Probably get it down there, we might get the sprout, but then it's up to mother nature to keep it wet because we don't have irrigation out there. It does not look like it's going to be a good spring for grass without constant watering. We did reach out to uh our turf farm that we usually use because we do a lot of repair on the other fields, you know, particularly in front of goals and soccer fields each year. So we bring in some turf. And we did get a price for turf for left field. Um I think the two issues with that, one would be the cost, which was very expensive. The second being that all we would do is be putting it down and it would die off before we, before next year and we'd still be out that money. That would be, you know, a cost worth considering, but it's upwards of sixty thousand dollars for the area that has been damaged.
Yeah, would it even hold with what's underneath it as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, um the uh folks that use the field in the summer have been notified that you have an issue.
Absolutely, yep, I've already talked to them that uh plan on at this point not using it. Um so they're already looking at other options.
Any other question? No, whichever.
I just got some questions.
And Eric and
Eric and
I don't see, yeah, okay. Candace, go ahead.
So first, I just want to thank everybody that's reached out and sent emails to to share their input. Um I actually had gone over and and did a walkthrough um a couple of weeks ago and also just a few days ago. So it just seems to me, and I'm certainly not a field expert, I don't know, you know, a whole lot about it, other than the fact that it's very important uh for drainage and different, the proper materials to be used, curtain drains, all these different things, grading is super important when the installation of things are being put in. So it just seems to me like right from the get-go, this has been kind of going downwards. And it just seems like we're constantly either trying to Band-Aid. And to my knowledge, I don't think it's ever been dug up. Okay, so it just seems like we need to, I don't think that there is a quick fix, to be honest with you. And if there is, I'm certainly in support of it, I am. Um but I I'd like to see more of a permanent solution. Um I certainly like the idea of a multi-faceted, uh multifunctional usage type of of turf um that all can be used. And we can certainly have conversations about um funding and fundraising and collaboratives with our town. And, you know, I, you know, our town is really built on relationships, right? And um, you know, the love and the pride. So I, when I read those emails, I get it, you know, I I understand. And even for myself, um I don't have a baseball player, but, you know, all of our children are really ours. You know, even though I only technically have two, we have, you know, quite a few. And um and just myself, reading one of the articles in the past day paper really hurt, you know? But the truth of the matter, I mean, I, you know, tomorrow, but um the best thing about it is really, it was a truth bomb. Really, you know, I mean, it's something that we really need to focus on and and try to fix. But I was eager to listen to Chris to see if there was anything as immediate. I mean, I I just, I I don't think there is an immediate even, you know, for someone to seed and and that type of thing, it's just not going to work. I mean, if anybody takes a walk over there, it really is um in bad, it's in bad shape. So although if if somebody can, if there is a a quick fix to get the kids onto the field, I certainly am in support of it. Um but I am definitely in support of a permanent solution. Um
Good, good. Agreed. Let's see, Jamie and then Eric.
Hi, Chris. So senior baseball mom here. I'll just make sure I put that out in the open so nobody has any questions or doubts. So my question is this, did last year off hurt the field? Because I would have thought that having the year off would have been good for the field. Like it would have helped it heal and do all the things that it needed to do. Did it make it worse?
I don't think it ultimately um did anything either way. Um because this, it's if it's a soils issue, if it's the wrong clay, it's going to swell and contract with moisture content. And running on and off of it probably causes temporary damage. But, you know, maybe just to the turf and whatnot that you're running on. But um, you know, we oversee it, we let it grow in, but like it, like we all know, we had some sort of grub issue and then we had no rain. And I think the lack of rain uh and the insects damaged the grass itself, but the underlying, you know, uh soils issue. And and anybody who's walked out there, you can see footprints that have been there for three weeks now.
Oh, yeah.
And it was strange when I went out there, it hadn't rained for a week and a half, and I was still putting footprints in it. So there's a bigger issue than that. Um, you know, we always talk about resting fields um when they've been overused. But in this case, I don't think um the fact that they're rested helped anyway because there are the other underlying problems.
Well, and that was going to lead me to my second question, because we were kind of hoping at home that the rest would have done the field good and that would have been great for playing this year. But obviously, it wasn't, did we overlook it? Like, did it just get pushed back because of COVID and we just didn't look at the field to prepare for this year?
No, we did, you know, we did the normal uh field maintenance all year long. We kept it mowed, we uh we did the treatments, we did the fertilizing. Um yeah, so we treated it uh as we normally would have. Uh actually, I think we let it grow just a little bit longer. We didn't keep it as short, but that shouldn't have had any impact on what the condition is now.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Actually, you know
If you, if you walk, you know, if you, like, somebody mentioned it, if you walk right field, right field looks really nice.
Yeah.
Loop around to left and
Okay. Eric, did you, did you have a question, Eric?
Yeah, I had uh actually kind of three different thoughts, so apologies for the lens. But I did want to comment, Candace made mention that, you know, talk, there was talk about our athletic facilities in East Lime that I I took a large offense to, so I wanted to comment on that. I think we have a great basketball court, we have a great turf field, we have a phenomenal pool, we have great tennis courts, we have grass fields, and our parts and rec facilities are phenomenal. Our baseball field is a problem, it's a major problem. But that don't, let's not kind of throw all of East Lime's athletic facilities. Uh, you know, I don't know, throw the baby out with bathwater, whatever the term or whatever you want to say. I mean, look, we have a problem with the baseball field and we need to address it. But that doesn't mean the rest of our athletic facilities aren't very good. And I think our student athletes really benefit from having all those facilities. So I did want to say that. As I look at this problem, I actually look at it as three-part problem. It's this year, it's next year, in the future. Because let's be honest, I don't know, I don't remember how many years it took us to get the turf field, but it took five, six, seven years, whatever it is, to get agreement and approval and all that. It took a long time. So I I I love the idea of a multipurpose field, but I don't think that solves, it definitely doesn't solve this year. I don't think it solves next year. And I don't know, even even if, even if we approved it tomorrow, it may not solve next year in terms of being able to install it and all that. So I think we need to think about um at least, you know, this year, next year, and then kind of a future solution. In terms of, as I break it down and I look at this year, Chris, you mentioned, you know, throwing grass seed on the field, but then it, if we don't, there's no irrigation. So if we can't, if it doesn't get watered, it it's just going to die anyway. Can we get Can we get, I mean, this is, can we get hoses? Do we have hoses and connections to get to the field? Because I bet we could get volunteers to come out and water the field a couple times a day or three times, I mean, get if if that's what it took, I know I would, as a parent of an athlete, I don't have baseball players, so I wouldn't, but I would have been out there. Um, I would have volunteered and I would have been out there, if you can get a hose there, and that's a chance, if that gives it a chance, but it's not definite, but if that could give it a chance, um, I bet we'd have a line of people or students who would go out there and water the is that an option or that's not an option?
It's really not a good option, and the and the reason we find that is there's no commercial water connection to the baseball field. So the baseball field, the water that comes to the press box and the the ground shop, that comes from a water line that is fed by a well and a pump that's right outside the front door of the Flanders School. The line for that is a two-inch water line and it's twelve hundred feet long. And we don't get a lot of uh volume out of that pump at any given time, so we'd actually need to put a booster pump in. We get enough water to keep the basically the infield wet and the wet down the clay before they play on it and whatnot, but there's not a lot of overall flow. You know, to really put a proper irrigation in, you wanna tie into the uh into the the water, the actual water lines. So I I don't think that really that's a feasible solution, I know I I we threw it out there, because a lot of people said just throw grass seed on there, but it's a it's a little more complicated than that. And then the other issue too is, you know, you you start watering it and some places will drain really well, and then you wind up with puddles again out in left field and you're back to where you started, so I don't think that overall that would be a solution. And we don't have a lot of time really for it to take hold, maybe you get it to sprout, maybe you get a half an inch, then you're playing on it, you just tear it right out again. Um, but to your point about the the three uh three-pronged solution this year, next year, and subsequent years, I have been in contact with another turf company because we were looking at it the same way, I don't know if we can do much this year, but and again, you know, a turf solution being the long term, you know, what can we do to get it playable by next year? So I talked to a company that's out of, I forgot the town, it's over in Litchfield, that does a lot of professional turf, um colleges and pros and whatnot, unfortunately they're tied up because this is their busy season, but as soon as they get a break, they're gonna come down, take a look at the field. And they put out a couple of reports, they did a Greenwich had an issue that seemed similar to ours. Um, they put a report out for their board of ed and their town as well on some solutions for that, and I think they would be applicable to ours, which probably be something that we would be able to get taken care of by next year, uh but like I said, uh they're tied up, as soon as I can get them out there to give us that evaluation, that's what I wanna do.
Thank, thanks, Chris, I appreciate that, and and as we start to think, I mean, if we're entertaining a multipurpose field, um, you know, just everybody, which I I'm kind of loosely or I'm in favor of until like, but you know, there's a lot of details, because um you know, we need to think about as we approach that is how, you know, funding, someone mentioned already, is getting the town support. You know, we need to revisit advertising discussions and things like that, because um adding another turf field, um, you know, it's a significant expense that does come up again to, you know, in whatever, six, eight years or so, we're gonna have to replace, hopefully it's more like eight to ten years, we have to replace the turf field. Um, so I I it's just, it's it's a big discussion and it's a significant expense, so um, again, having town support and getting fundraising and advertising and on, starting to think about all that um would definitely help us get there, it would be great to have that, I do want to as is as we do think about that, if we go to that, I would like to understand, can can it be softball and baseball? Um, and and something like that, I don't need an answer to that now, but I'd like to at least understand that. And then I know there was a picture, I think it was Bunnell High School, um, kinda had their turf field, their baseball field going to the football field, which in theory we could do. I think you could get rid of this scene parking lot, but I'm not sure how it solves anything, because I'm not sure how everybody practices, because if if baseball is practicing, that means lacrosse can't practice, otherwise they're dodging, dodging balls. So I'm not, I'd be curious how that works, because it doesn't seem like that's a great solution for us. Um, but I I I did wanna make those points, so anything we, if there's anything we can do for this year other than spending a significant amount of dollars to get, to maybe get a game, I mean, that's really what we're probably talking about. I don't know if that will work, but I would like to solve something for next year, so that next year our teams can play and then think about the long-term solution. And and Chris, I I do thank you for, you know, all the work you're doing, and I forgot to mention, as I went through my first part um is, we did bring Chris on, because he is, we weren't, we we weren't great with our facilities and maintaining them over the years, I think we kinda let them go, and the reason we brought Chris on is he's kept us honest and he did a great job with the capital improvement plan, and and that is gonna help us maintain our facilities, so something like this does not happen again in the future, so I I do appreciate all your efforts.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, I, whoop, Candace and then Jamie, I guess. Did you have your hand up? Okay, well, go ahead, because you haven't spoke.
You know, I I I think this is a big, long discussion, so I almost feel like we should table it and almost see like from the nineteen people who wrote in, if they wanna form a subcommittee and find a solution and generate some kind of an answer, because what's to said is, you know, what are the options? So we can, and then one of the, one of the remedies, we saw, they, we, but it sounds to me like there's an irrigation problem, like an engineering problem, like there's a a real underlying, and my husband said, we knew about the board event previously, that it was a topic of discussion back then. I don't know how old it is, maybe it's not a good spot for the field. And I'm not an, like Candace said, she's not an, I'm not an engineer, so it's not my will-do's, but certainly if there's a recurring issue, Chris, you can help me with that, but I just really feel like we could go round and round this for a really long period of time, whereas there are people who do know what some good solutions are, come up with some plans, you know, as as a board, we could decide what we think is the best option for it.
I think that that's very well said, Kate, um, and I am, you know, I I just um just feel awful about the uh the baseball team and the kids um that can't play at their home field, I guess, I guess, I mean, it's wonderful that we've got Bridebrook. Yeah, gorgeous. So I think what we're hearing is that the board is just extremely supportive of trying to figure out what's what's the right thing to do, short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term for the for the field, and and we'll wait to get the additional information in and uh and we really, really appreciate all the uh support from the parents and and the community that uh gave us uh feedback on this item as well, so it's great. Any other, Jamie, you wanna say something?
I just have a question. So years ago, we used to have our football games at the Coast Guard Academy. High school had no drains also. The football field wouldn't drain, so we had to move our football teams to the Coast Guard Academy. I think for two years, we had all of our home games away during the construction and during the prior year before it. And I know we've done soccer, because we have had no field, we've done softball, because we've had no field, but my question is, did we have security for East Lime at all those events? Because we have East Lime security at our baseball games at Bridebrook, and I don't ever remember seeing security at any game ever, even when JV was at vets, I don't ever remember security being at those events. And I'm just kind of questioning why they're there and and be at an expense.
Let me check, I honestly, um, I did not know that they were there uh at Bridebrook, so let me check into that.
Yeah, I just, I've never, I, the first time I was at the game at Bridebrook, I was like, why do we have security here?
Yeah. They're they're working, they're not.
Watching the game, okay.
Never.
Yeah.
Experienced that in all the years of JV games, varsity baseball, anything away, I've just never seen it.
Yeah. Okay, Candace?
I just have a quick question for Chris, um, it, is there a curtain drain part of this system at at the field? Or is that something that we could look at as a, as a tool?
So what I found in my, you know, in doing my research is they put an under drainage system in in two thousand twelve, thirteen as one of our the projects. And there there is drainage, but I think again, the overall problem is uh you have a lens of material sitting on top of the field that that doesn't let anything percolate through it, and all the water is just sitting on on it like sort of a, in a bowl, so even though there's the under drain underneath it, the water can't get to the drain.
So that would come from possibly using the um, not the proper material when making, when when putting the field in, right?
That seems to be what the issue is, yep, and that's what we're hoping to get confirmed by the testing we sent out.
Good, yeah, okay, all right, okay, so, oh, Barry?
There's one more suggestion.
Great.
Looking at all the money that's coming down from the governor.
Yeah, I was thinking that too.
ARP, whatever, um, look at our budget, we have about as I understand the rumors that are coming out of this, there's gonna be a financial incentive to districts to do a STEAM project.
Yeah.
That it comes down, use the money for a STEAM activity. There's an incentive that's gonna come to districts to do that, and I know, I looked at our plans so far, we do not have a STEAM activity involved. And also very, I'm thinking of this in terms of um students and educational opportunities and the concept of inclusion and engagement and genuine problems. If we could take some of the money we have and develop a STEAM-type project that related to issues like turf management, ecology, all this kind of theory, you know, there's there's math, there's engineering, there's science, nutrition. We could easily engage uh like the Connecticut Extension Service, you know, and nutrients and stuff. And with the money, we could hire experts and we could actually get students involved in um leading and solving this problem and coming up with a plan themselves. Using the money that's coming down from the uh the governor's plan for a summer camp program, and we could frame it as a STEAM activity.
Yeah, yeah.
That might work.
Yeah.
No, Mike, there's a lot of money there to do it.
Yeah.
So the kids, uh, you know, we could hire experts to come in and work with them, but basically let them take the initiative and investigate this and uh come up with a plan. You know, they would have a high degree, you know, the the kids that get involved with us, they could have a high degree of motivation, because it's something that they are you know, really engaged in, and it could be uh the type of activity also for them as they go on to college applications to talk about the kind of, you know, activities and projects that they engage in, what they they learned and developed. There there's a lot of opportunities here, so
Yep.
I think we could turn this into a learning, problem-solving activity for students funded by the money that's coming down from the governor with the financial incentive to uh frame this as a STEAM project.
Yeah, yeah, that's great, neat idea, neat idea, John?
So, I was a senior that had to play my senior year of basketball.
That's right.
That's right.
That's, when you're talking to your tone, but I think that's a bad. Second part, I'm all in the turf. It's such an eyesore when you drive in.
Yeah.
If you look at how many folks wrote in, as Kate was saying, you know, there's a lot of money.
Yeah, you know, and we've got the the neat thing too is we have the lights.
Yeah.
The lights are there, and we don't have, there are no lights at Bridebrook, right?
No, there are no lights at Bridebrook.
So that's another, another uh piece to the equation too, so, no, it's great, it's great. Yeah, and great.
Yeah, that wasn't needed.
Okay. Okay, let's. Okay, Kate, you you tried, you did, you did a really good job, Eric, go ahead.
It's real quick, um, just trying to solve something for this year. I I heard that one of the things that the players like to do is play under the lights, have a night game. Can we get whether it's Coast Guard, probably not another high school, because that wouldn't feel good, but I don't know, the high school or Dodge Stadium or somewhere, can we get one game under the lights for them, something to look at? So I don't need an answer, just something to look at.
Yeah, we used that, a couple of years ago, we used that, because the the field wasn't bright then. Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yep, good, good suggestion.
Okay, let's, let's, let's push on. Uh, the next item is just an update on our uh twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two operating budget and uh the ESR grants and and alike, so Jeff, you wanna?
Yeah, let me um, let me share um a couple of slides quick. And I'm hoping they'll come up up uh up there, they should. There we go. All right, so uh two things um with this, we wanna talk about just a recap of where we are with the Board of Finance uh final adoption, uh or, you know, pushing to the public hearing this evening as well as the use of the ESR and the ARP funds, just to kinda do some recap on these pieces. Because some decisions have to be made pretty quick when it comes to, you know, to staffing. So if we just take a look first at a a quick recap, so we were at the three point seven nine. Uh, that was the Board of Ed's adopt, and we pushed that forward to the Board of Finance. We talked to the Board of Finance, we presented about using four hundred and thirty-one thousand nine sixteen out of what we hope will be getting soon, notice on the ARP funds at that one point nine, we haven't heard yet. Um, but we're supposed to be getting the one point nine, so using the four thirty-one out of that, the Board of Finance on top of that uh made a reduction of a hundred and sixty-two thousand. So you total those two numbers together, you get the five ninety-three nine one six. So that now represents a two point six three percent increase over the current fiscal year. So um that's, that's where we're at from what the Board of Finance had uh made a motion and adopted um and what's going forward uh this evening, that totaled the five ninety-three nine one six. Staffing needs, uh just a quick outline of, you know, all of these positions that we had originally had brought forward to our, to the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed adopted are all still in there. It's just, the only thing that's difference is if you look down in, you know, the lower right-hand corner, the six paraprofessionals, the two kindergarten teachers and the two grade two teachers, we would propose coming out of the um ARP funds, that's the four thirty-one. And we have posted for all of these positions to really get the ball rolling, because every district around us is doing the same exact thing, looking for people, and uh we're we're gonna run into an issue if we don't get hiring rather quickly. So those are all in, um and ARP is just so there's clarity on what ARP is is covering, what we've proposed. I I just left this in here, just a recap of now ESR, the ESR two, we have already, uh over April vacation. Um, Mariana, we worked and finalized with Amy and Kim, we finalized the, and Chris Lynn finalized this uh ESR two grant funding. Everything is into the state, um, Mariana, you didn't hear today, I didn't hear today yet on approval. Okay, so we're waiting approval on on the seven seventy-two, the use of of that fund, because that all needed to go in, there was a deadline and timeline on that, so that's in, and what that is right here, that's, this is what we put in for, you've seen this slide before, showed at the last meeting. So the duck cleaning, the middle school and the high school for uh air quality, not that there's an issue, but we wanted to clean uh the ducks. It's a good opportunity to get that done, the summer pathways program and instructional piece for two years that Amy has talked about. Um, the Wilson training, uh some additional elementary psychologist time, the middle school social worker, the benefits associated with that and the home internet, uh home internet access. All those pieces, the rationale, the goals, um projections are all in the state system, we're waiting for feedback on that. The American Rescue Plan, just a snapshot of what it can be used for and and how it can be used. Um, Barry, I'm not sure if you're referencing, if you were referencing this or additional federal funding, because I've heard there might be more money coming too, so yeah, exactly, yeah, so, yep. That's, yeah, that's what what we're referencing, exactly, so I think, and we haven't heard anything yet on on that, but hopefully soon, but ARP just gives a snapshot of what it can be used for um here and what the recommendation, process should be the same as what we did for ESR two. So uh we're we're just, we're waiting for the ability to get into the system on that, we haven't heard yet. So when you start to break that down, this is where we're at, and this is still all, you know, tentative, other than, you know, the the four thirty-one, which you've already outlined, but one point nine million in total, ARP. Four thirty-one nine sixteen just showed you the rationale. Four thirty one nine sixteen just showed you the rationale for the use of of that with the six pair of professionals, two kindergarten teachers, two second grade teachers, et cetera. The operating budget deficit for this year, five hundred thousand, uh the COVID costs. So we won't go to the town for a special appropriation. We would cover it. And then it, you know, add those two together, subtract it from one point nine million, you're left with nine hundred and sixty eight thousand. So roughly almost a million dollars. Left. Here was the breakdown of the four thirty one again, um just so you could kind of see that, uh, you know, the cost associated with that, which what made it up. And then. Lastly, um for just show you the bar graphs one more time. So this is some proposals and this is kind of where we're we're doing some brainstorming with um. Administration, our our central office, we're in, we're talking with, you know, I suppose talk to the CILs. Um so we're we're brainstorming needs. And a couple of them have come to light, which we wanted to kind of share in uh this we shared with the Board of Finance as well, but I wanted to circle back on this. Um, you know, we've got all the technology integration now. Um we're relying on, you know, our regular ed teachers. For the most part and some more tech support, you know, to help integrate that. So the idea of potentially bringing forth some elementary technology teachers that were core to to that work and that focus. Wanted each of the elementary schools to support that venture. Whether that stays in play, we don't know. It might last for a year or two or three years and then. We determine all down the road whether or not we want to keep that or not. Um again, the money will run out at some point. It needs to be absorbed into the operating budget if we want to keep it. Pathways, we've talked about um slash, you know, a five oh four coordinator. That pathways is something, you know, I'm passionate about. I think, you know, many of you are passionate about. I know Deb Kelly's in the high school staff is passionate about. We need to get that up and rolling. So to really put some eyes in support and having a coordinator to help assist that and get it back. We lost all the internships with Coastal. We need to regain and and regroup on that and get those back as well as what we want to do at the high school. Um it's some additional elementary school psychologist support, one person dedicated to Lily V. Haynes. There is definitely an additional need for the special area programs that are there. And then at the high school, the last piece are multi-tiered systems of support. Um we have what we call the ARC program right now. Um it's a support for students that, you know, are struggling or, you know, not doing well. Um that we're trying to help. We don't have certified people doing that to help them. That's a problem.
Yeah.
So we we need some certified. We want two certified teachers that could help, you know, to uh support. A number of students. I think the number was a number of six, was it sixty? Did we talk about the number this morning? Was there sixty, sixty four students that, you know, we identified that are part of that program that could use that support?
Not only that, but what you have in there now is parents.
Yeah, exactly.
And they don't talk to parents about.
No.
His issues because that's not their job.
Nope.
And they don't go to parenting conferences to talk to parents about their kids.
That's exactly right. So thi- this is just kind of breaking the the surface though of some things that, you know, are definite needs. There's other ones. We talked about other ones. You know, uh today, uh we met with the administrators this morning, talked through some additional supports. You know, the whole point of this is to try and hit hard with with recovery next year and recovery requires supports that go in place. Whether they stay uh or or go, you know, that that's what, you know, we we need to determine. And then just lastly, quick, because I know we're short on time, um. Do you see the from start to finish? Um I know it's hard to see up there because it's being blocked by the the TV screen, but we went from two point six three. Uh to all the way to the end. Now we're back at two point six three. It's about a thirty dollar difference roughly. So kind of ironic that uh. That's where we uh where we landed for the the Board of Finance approved. Yeah, a lot in between, a lot of work in between to get back to where we originally had started from now. So.
It was, it basically, it was the estimated cost for reducing our budget um by two, by two of the three math coaches. That's that was, that was kind of what they they kind of, that was kind of like they said, geez, I don't know. If we were, if we, with the knowledge that they had, you know, they kind of said, well, he's like, I don't know, maybe we should just do one math coach at the middle school. That was kind of their. The thing, but they immediately said in a very positive sort of way. Um but that's the Board of Ed's decision. Um and they had definitely an amount of a mill increase that they were, they were aiming at. Um as well. So that that's kind of. But we can, yeah, we, yeah, they said that, you know, hey, it's up, it's up to you and that's, you know, that's what we we will have to do.
It's backing into the mill rate and kind of see where things were at as as well. So.
Mm hmm.
Um, so um. That's a.
What was, yeah, I mean, overall, overall, I think the 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 Board of Finance meeting was actually, it was long. Um but it was pretty, it was, they were, it was pretty reasonable. I mean, it was, it was probably one of the better.
Yeah, right. No, it was a good working relationship again this year.
Yeah, and there and there were, and there was, there were, there were uh Board of Finance members that were even, you know, kind of like. Geez, maybe, maybe we're, you know, maybe we can, you know, and we don't have to reuse it this much. So that was, there was a, there was a, there was a balance.
Yeah.
So it was good. It was good.
And and you with the kindergarten teachers, we're still not sure if we're going to need them. We're watching closely. If we don't, I mean, there's roughly, you know, all over a hundred thousand uh in potential savings. Um that bites into that four thirty one. So there's more money to use there and. Um we'll see, uh, you know, what else comes uh comes forward. Um there might be some wiggle room at Ionic Center where. Uh we might not need to fill a potential position. So um and there's some other things that we continue to look at that could provide some savings. So, yeah.
Okay. Oh, Barry.
You made one reference to the money that I was referring to.
Yes.
You know, that really everyone I'm talking to, no one really knows how much money there is. There's ESR, there's ARP, and then there's something else out there.
That's right, yeah. And that's.
I was referring to a steam is coming as part of the ESR project.
Oh.
The work on that, if the words around that are innovation, acceleration and enrichment. They're hoping that that money that comes down to the districts is going to be moving forward. It's not so much looking backward.
Yeah.
Enrichment, acceleration.
Yeah.
And um innovation.
Mm hmm.
And that's why as part of the ESR money, as I understand it, there's going to be an incentive. For schools, districts that use steam projects. As part of enrichment and acceleration of learning. So I think that that would come under on the seven seven two uh chart.
You're talking ESR two.
That would be the the summer instructional pathway.
Yeah.
Uh and basically, you know, I mean, it's just, I'm trying to like just.
Yeah.
An idea to think about.
Yeah.
That if this is coming down the road, that uh some of these monies could be, you know, the steam project. With the high school field could be an all encompassing activity. You know, we could get, uh, we could use some of this ESR money, you know, to engage students in an accelerated enrichment project. Where they're using sites, uh, science, technology, engineering and math to improve a real. Situation here and we could get access to the instructional resources that would need to support them. Maybe the material.
Yeah. Yeah. Good possibility.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's keep going then. Okay. All right. So let's move on to our next uh item, which is a proposed East Line High School graduation date for the class of twenty twenty one. The last day of school for the school year as well. So Jeff?
Yeah, so um two pieces though. We got the high school back and we can tie in the middle school. There we go.
Somebody was excited.
So we'll, we'll start with the with the high school and then we can chime with the middle school. But uh Deb, why don't I, I'll turn it over to you for the thoughts and conversations. Obviously you brought forward um and we've had about the high school and the, there's some math work that went on uh with our our students. Uh figuring out the size of the field and how many people we could have on it uh as well. But let me turn it over to you. You can share. Information pertaining to the dates that you uh and your team members have brought forward.
Okay, so we are the assuming that the last day of school ends up being the seventeenth. We were looking at doing graduation the night before on the sixteenth. Because we need a rain date. Um we would not be unable this year to be able to bring graduation inside. Um what graduation will look like and 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 we literally gave this to the math department to help us figure out. Um we will be able to with um social distancing of three feet between the graduates, have all of the graduates on the field at the same time. And then we're looking at being able to have approximately two parents or two. Uh family members or friends, whoever um on the field proceeding and then another two. Friends or family members in the stands. So each student would be able to have four guests at the um at the graduation and it would all be in person. Now we're playing around with exactly what that's going to look like on the field and the procession and the recession and making sure that we don't have crowded gates and such. Um but with a three foot distance between each of the graduates and between each of the families, we think we can have. The graduation together on the field with um four guests per graduate.
Yeah, and you just, inside would just not be an option. I I know it does, yeah, it does pose a little bit of a problem, obviously, for any of the um. Post-graduation evening, you know, the the, yeah, the parties.
We're also looking at um streaming it live, so you'd be able to watch it from home.
Good. Yeah. So we'd have a rain date and then the middle school would fall the fourteenth and fifteenth to the fourteenth, they could do theirs and then the fifteenth would be their rain date.
And the middle school is going to do it at the high.
At the high school, exactly. So they can.
Good.
Yeah, so we can use the space.
Right.
Which, yeah, which can be need for the kids.
Are they still going to be able to do their little picnic thing or no?
Um, probably not. We probably wouldn't encourage. I don't know. Jason, did you think at all about the picnic piece?
Yeah, we were, we were just thinking that, um, you know, and first of all, I want to thank the high school for for just having a really open mind saying, hey, what a great idea to bring us there. And we don't want it to mirror the high school um graduation because we know that's special for the seniors. But I think our kids are are going to be really excited about that and and it's really, um. It's a great opportunity, right? Because we're handing our kids over to the high school and what better spot to do that. They've been here for four years, so it'll be fun to bring them to that high school field. But we haven't considered kind of the picnic. We're trying to still bring everyone together, but at the same time. Um comply with all those safety things. So, you know, maybe in the future, we can think about something like that. But. Again, any questions, I'm happy to answer. And again, I do hats off to the high school for helping us out with this.
Good, good.
Can I ask, Deb, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It's Candace and my favorite part of graduation. Are the seventh graders gonna, I mean, the the seniors gonna go back to their elementary school to walk the halls?
We have not had that conversation. Um right now, we have not had students go from one building to the other, including, you know, our eighth grade students that come to the high school. So I was assuming not.
Yeah.
But we will be back.
We will be back.
We will be back.
We watched the uh, the car parade uh last year.
I haven't heard anything on the car parade. You know, I can circle back with uh one Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah, Mark, Mark said he organized.
I think it's great, but it's just the um, the excitement of of actually having everyone together and really coordinating that. That's a huge. Accomplishment. So thank you, Deb, and your team and the math department and we want to work on that. It's fantastic. I'm excited.
Uh, good.
Okay.
All right.
So I guess we've got to set the graduation date, eh?
All right.
Tim?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
I I think I I have a question. I think Lee has a question as well. So.
Thanks, okay.
That's a so. Um, was any thought, or what's the thought in terms of, I know there's a bunch of dignitaries, which I think I'm included in, which is. It's a pretty weak term if I'm included in that, but anyway, um, what's the? What's the, are 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 you plant, was that, is that part of the planning? Because part of me. I have mixed feelings. Part of me says I shouldn't be there if another family mem, if it could lead to another family member or something like that and I. Can stream it or I can do something else. So be interested in the thinking on. All the non-graduates and non-family members who might be there.
So what we're thinking is that we would invite the dignitaries and the teachers, because a lot of times the teachers. To join the processional, but you would not be given um the best seat in the house. Let's just say it that way. We would reserve a section for those people to sit in the stands um once they processed in, but not to take up space that would, a family member would, would. You know, want, not on the field.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay, Lee, did you have a question?
My question was actually about guidance for teachers being able to attend and celebrate alongside our graduates. So, thank you. And then one last thought, because I also, Jamie and Candace are right there with you in loving the graduation walks in our elementary schools. And I totally understand why that's not possible to do in person this year. I do think it's really cool for our elementary cool kid. Our elementary school kiddos to be able to celebrate. So I'm wondering if there's some sort of virtual way that we could get them involved or. Um being able to connect with um alum alumni who are graduating from their schools.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yep.
Look into that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so with that. Were, are we ready to set the graduation date here?
I would like to make a motion to set the graduation date for Eastline High School class of twenty one to be Thursday. So. I was gonna say the motion says the seventeenth, that's why I'm. Wednesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and to adjust the twenty 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 one Eastline Public Schools calendar to reflect Thursday, June seventeen. Twenty twenty one and the last day of school for all Eastline Public Schools students.
Okay. Okay, Candace seconds it. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? Okay, all right, passes. We're all set on that. Uh, we can move on to the next item for discussion. That is uh the Eastline High School exams.
Okay, yeah, as we um came to you, uh, just just some discussion, uh, items on the midterm exams. Um, Mr. Kidd and Mrs. Kelly and Mr. Pasulo uh and Mr. Mars, um all looked at uh final exams. And they're going to just share out some thoughts and ideas on uh what we're looking at for a little bit of tweaking with final exams. So I know, Henry, are you leading that that off or is that Mrs. Kelly?
Sure, I can, I can talk about exams. Um, thanks, everybody, for uh having us. Um, I know we talked a little bit at midterms. Uh, and as you all are aware, we uh decided or against holding traditional midterms uh at the happier point. For a variety of different reasons. Um and um, you know, uh, we got together the same group of teachers. That we got together to discuss midterms uh a few weeks ago. Uh and talked to them a little bit about what they wanted uh final exams to look like this year. Uh and then um we brought those ideas forward to the curriculum instructional uh leaders as well. Uh and I believe Jeff shared with you in the board docs uh what we've uh come up with so far. Um and really, the big thing is um that we wanted to make sure that we had consistency with semester long courses. Um if you were a student and you took psychology A the first half of the year, um you know, and you didn't have a midterm. Uh, you know, psychology A students having a final exam, uh you know, wouldn't necessarily jive all that well. So we wanted to make sure that we had some consistency. But there were some concerns that if you were a freshman or if you, uh, you know, if you were a freshman, you're going to go through your whole freshman year without. Running through a traditional exam schedule. Um or if you're a sophomore, you only had midterm exams last year. So we wanted um to provide teachers and students with an opportunity to have a summative experience. But to have that summative experience not count um as heavily as traditional final exams would have counted in the past. Um so we are going to, or we're proposing to run a traditional exam schedule. Um with the two hour exam window uh and have those exams, or excuse me, summative experiences. Count towards quarter four grades. So this gives students the opportunity to run through what a traditional uh schedule would look like. While at the same time not having to deal with the stress that they normally would uh have over a big final exam grade uh weighing heavily on their final average. Um, the hope is that teachers will take this opportunity to not just have traditional tests, but to have culminating. Uh, you know, presentations, performances, uh maybe reflections, maybe a lab. Uh to demonstrate, you know, their competency with the content and skills critical to that particular course. Um, so that's basically the idea. Um, moving forward here, it allows us to maintain uh grades and weighting the same way we did. Uh at the midterm point. Um and we hope that this is a way to get accountability back and start to ratchet it up. Expectations uh again for our students now that we're back full in the building uh and as we look ahead to next year. Any questions?
Questions? Eric, uh Eric's got his hand up.
So um, I I think the plan sounds great. I, my question, and it might be more for a future meeting, is as we reflect. is as we reflect back on the changes we made in COVID, we do, are we going to reconsider maybe the future and how we handle midterms and finals and what makes most sense and how we do that? So be something to think about, I, I think and then, for me, in an ideal world, freshmen and sophomores, maybe less emphasis and juniors and seniors, maybe more emphasis, so they get ready for those going to college, get ready for that experience. It won't be perfect, obviously, because some different years or in different classes, but kind of upper level classes, lower level classes. But to be interested in, and maybe, maybe it's after we go through this and reflect back, it'd be good to know, you know, what changes we may have in the future. But I, this, it sounds like a great plan, so thanks for pulling this together.
Thank you.
A good point, Eric, and we have had some discussions about that, so then those will continue, yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to raise, um, attention to one line here, uh, the third bullet, content and skills critical to the course, which would be the I'm going to bring that up again when we talk about the graduation profile. What is the link between the, uh, student's ability to demonstrate skills and competencies relative to a course? And related to the list of skills and competencies in the graduation profile? Because I want to, I'm going to bring that up in the, the next slide, but I wanted to just pay attention that that, that line is in there.
Yeah.
How does it relate to the larger issue of the graduation profile?
Okay, good. Anybody else, any other comments or things, points on this, uh, item, are you good? Okay, well, with that, let's, let's move on to our, our, the next item, which is the Eastline High School profile for the graduate, um, and, uh, Jeff, did you have some things to say? We're going to turn it over to Deb, or?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to, to Deb, who's going to share some slide, uh, you're going to share, you want me to share those slides, Deb, or? It was easier, I can do it, but while.
Whatever's easier, I can do it too, if, if I have permission to do it.
Yeah, if you don't, I can pull them up. Um, so what, what we're doing right now, just a, a, kind of a caveat with this is working on the district improvement plan, but we're centering our recovery goals for next year uh, around the profile of the graduate. So, um, we're in the midst of that, we're going to turn some of that information over to the, uh, the principals, um, once, you know, beginning of May hits, and then we'll be coming forward, you know, we want to do that work before the end of this year and have a real draft, uh, set. So, um, with that, Deb is going to talk though about, you know, that vision of the graduate, because it started at the high school level. And it really started, what, Deb, two, almost two years ago, some of the work and things, but it hasn't trickled down yet, but it needs to, it needs to become the center of our, of our work, so. Deb, you, you want to, do you have permission to share, or do you want me, I can share too, if you want, either way.
Okay, you see it?
You got it.
All right. So, uh, what I'm going to do is give you a little bit of background of how we got to where we are right now with the vision of the graduate. Um, first of all, it is a, it's, it's a big push by NIESK, so you're going to see that all high schools, um, in the northeast and really throughout the country are looking at a vision or a portrait or a profile of the graduate. Um, so a bunch of us, as part of the NIESK, um, went to a workshop back in October of twenty nineteen, and this entire two-day workshop was all about how do you develop a vision of the graduate? Um, and I went, uh, along with three of the teachers, also CILs. And what we did for two days is really work on the essential question, and I, I think this sort of answers Barry's question, but, um, it, we were, we were instructed on how to develops this, what do we want our kids to have for skills when they graduate, not values, not tasks, but what do they need to be successful humans and citizens once they graduate? And we were literally given, uh, like a giant piece of paper with a person on it and asked to fill in, what do you want for your kids? What is that going to look like when they graduate? So we wanted, we were asked to identify the skills that Eastline High School values and what we want to make sure as our kids walk out across that stage, what they have, um, for skills. And I think that was a big, big adjustment and thoughts for us, because I think a lot of people go straight to what would a lot of others, you know, would, we would consider more values. So we were then tasked with bringing that back to, um, the school district and bringing in every single stakeholder into the conversation. So we started by doing this with the CILs and we basically um, redid the entire, uh, PD that we had with them. And what we, our goal was is to, first of all, give them a little bit of professional development to help us going forward, but also to have them come up with a list of the skills that they thought were important for our graduates. Next step was using the CILs, um, and some of you were involved with this. We had a full day professional development, um, in November twenty nineteen, which included uh, board members, Eastline High School staff, people from, uh, members of Salem's, uh, board, district administration, parents, some students, community members. And we went through kind of the same thing again with them and helping them kind of understand what the, the skills for a vision of the graduate would be. And again, came up with a list of skills. We took both of those two things and we then spoke with the students. And we worked with students at each grade level and asked them to come up with a list of skills. Took all of that information, and that's actually a word cloud from all of those different, um, different sessions that we had with different stakeholders. And we put that together and we kind of tallied, well, what, what were the common areas that we came up with? And these were the general, the words across the bottom, communication, citizenship, health, collaboration, problem solving and critical thinking, were the, the general, um, ideas that came out of all of those sessions. So then we took the high school administration along with the CILs, we worked on focusing on the four or five skills that we thought encompassed the work of the whole group of all of the stakeholders. And we came, kind of boiled it down to these four areas, effective communicators, productive collaborators, deep thinkers and active learners and contributing citizens. Um, from there, we had to come up with, well, what are the indicators of those skills? What is it that we are expecting to actually have them show us that they can do to show that they have, um, actually developed that skill the way that we want them to? Um, and we took all of the information from the CILs and we went back to the departments. And we worked on the wordsmithing and all of it, and this is where we landed, literally about a month before we left, before COVID. Um, so we've been working on, we, we, we had worked to this point, those are the four general areas, and then underneath that, you'll see what it is that we're looking for, for indicators in each of those areas, the things that we're expecting kids to be able to do um, as, when they graduate, that we believe would help them to be most successful in their life after graduation. Whether that be college, the world, um, whatever it is that they're doing. Um, and I'm not going to read all of those to you, I know you had this ahead of time, so hopefully you've had the chance to read it. Where we are now is here. So we're in the process of taking, so those, in addition to the vision of the graduate, the state is requiring us to have a mastery-based diploma assessment. So we're aligning the mastery-based diploma assessment with the vision of the graduate, and we see that as kind of coming down into two tiers, one on the social emotional side, one on the academic side. And this is kind of our overall Viking success plan, and then below the social emotional is our committees working on equity inclusion, our committees working on social emotional learning, and then under the academic, our mastery-based diploma assessment group and our instructional pathways group. And a lot of this is being delivered to kids and will continue to be delivered to kids in an even, I think, uh, more robust way in advisory as we go forward. There was a plan for advisory this year that we haven't really, we've only been able to do kind of a little bit of it because of, um, the fact that we were distant for so much of advisory. Uh, but we have plans for more of that for next year. So that's where we are, that was the process that we, we used to get there. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. And I, I know that, I mean, the vision of the graduate is something that the high school has developed as part of what's expected of, for us for NIESK, but obviously, it's something that we are all working toward, uh, you know, at all grade levels and all aspects of, of the district.
Yeah, very good, it's good we worked in, you know, they worked in that equity and inclusion component too, which really, you know, hadn't been talked a lot about, you know, in years, you know, or back in two thousand nineteen necessarily for our district, so that's embedded in there as well. Good, good. Questions, comments, Barry?
A lot of times I've served on accreditation teams and I've looked at schools with vision statements like that, I've always looked at the question, is it a noble statement of, uh, purpose, or is it a list of act, of, of actionable items to which a district is going to be accountable for? And in our case, you know, I look at this and say, all right, is, we're going to have this, and if let's say NIESK came to your accreditation team and said, we'll give you a provisional accreditation for one year with this, but next year we want to come back and we want to, you to demonstrate to us that your graduates have achieved all this. How are you going to show us that your graduates did this? What would happen if the Board of Finance said to us, we're going to give you a budget of fifty million dollars, but next year we want you to show that you have produced students with these values in demonstratable terms. I'm also wondering, what would happen if you took every high school teacher and you gave that teacher this list and to say, on your syllabus, you have to list these twenty-plus items and provide a formative and summative assessment for each of these activities to help students develop these skills. And I say all that because when I've worked on these teams and I'm always interested in how we're going to become the very, very best district in the state. The districts that have noble stuff like this are, yeah, they're good districts. But the very best districts have taken another step, where they've taken these items and they've made them accountable and actionable. So that they've put every one of these terms in an operational assessment that they can this is what it means when it goes walking by, and here's how we're assessing it and helping students develop. Now, if I mean that, uh, you have to, you know, basically, if you master or think through it, I'm encouraging you and suggesting you to move these items from noble statements to actionable items to which you can establish a level of accountability for.
And, and that's actually what we've been working on the second half of the year is, um, we've been looking at how a lot of other schools do it, but we also, and Mr. Kidd has been working with a, a group that is working on some of our assured experiences. And then how actually we're going to, because that's part of our goals with NIESK is to develop, how, how do we know that, that our kids have this? Um, that they have developed these skills that we're expecting from them. So we are, we are in the process of working on all of that right now.
Is there, Deb, I, I'm just going to ask, or, and Barry too, I mean, so just, I picked one of the, one of the things off of the vision for the graduate, I'll just take the first one I see, the ability to write and speak clearly for a variety of purposes. Now, is there an example of what it is that you would then have to, to say, here's the proof that this, this graduate has that ability, so.
Right, and, and that's, that's what we're working on right now, that's going to probably be in the form of either some kind of, um, I mean, we're, we're, it's kind of a progress, in progress right now, either an experience that they have, that, that every single student is going to have, or well, they'll have the option of having, or some type of a, um, I don't want to say portfolio, because I don't know that it's going to look like a portfolio, but that they will identify work. And at the end of the four years, we're hoping that they would be able to defend that they can do these things and be able to provide us examples of their work to show it. Um, or the course that they took, or the internship that they did, or whatever it is. So these are the conversations that we are literally having right now and hoping to, to pull together um, as we get toward the beginning of next year. For the mastery-based diploma assessment side of this, our current sophomores, that's a graduation requirement, so we're really focused on, on that class and the freshman class and helping them get to that point, so, um, but this is exactly what we're talking about right now.
I would have a quick response to that, my perspective, the term for variety of purposes would be, you made more specific.
Yeah.
And secondly, I would see this as being a lead-in for writing a cost of curriculum. So for every syllabus and every course, there is a demonstration in each course of the ability to write clearly.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's very good.
It's not a single project at the end, but this stuff becomes, that becomes integrated.
Yeah.
Then you have other terms, like what does a well-rounded student, you know, how is that specified and how do students get feedback on how they are or are not achieving this issue of being a well-rounded student? What does it mean? And what are the formative assess, uh, summative assessment that are given to students to help go down that path?
Yeah.
And I think the research that we've done, you look at the valedictorians, they know it, they pick it up intuitively. The lower-performing students don't get it.
Right.
You know, so this is something that has to be made explicit.
Is this, is this something then, in the long term, does this, does this get pushed, does this get pushed down into the middle school and the elementary schools? Right? So, so that connection, you know, that connection to me, I think, is really, uh, really an important, an important one, so it's, it's, it, it begins in kindergarten.
Yeah, and that's, exactly, that's, that's the next steps of talking with the middle school as well as down to the elementarys. You know, it's got to be a K twelve or pre-K to twelve experience, um, that, uh, for, of a journey, you know, for kids.
Great.
Can I make a comment? Um, I just wanted to say, this whole thing about contributing citizens, I was involved with, um, the cleanup that was over at Brooks Farm this weekend, and I got a nice letter from Gary the Pauski, I should have forwarded on to you, Jeff. Um, he said that Michael Chen, Colleen Doherty, Collins, Zon, Eastland and Kyrie all showed up to volunteer, so I think already we're looking at contributing citizens, and that was just one event that was going on. There was something that was a town cleanup that, a number of locations, people went out and picked up litter along the streets, all those nip bottles and recyclables that were trying to get off the street, and then the Giving Garden, there was a whole bunch of, uh, high school kids who showed up for that. So already we're doing it, but we just have to have a way to assess it, document it and prove it, because we're building this into who they are, and then eventually they'll become like people that continue to do this, and then say to their parents, don't close that out the window, you know, take care of it. And then capable of establishing persistent positive relationships, so they'll want to continue to do it when there's more town events like that, so, you know, we're building that capacity, but, but Amy always uses that expression. You're building that capacity and, and helping to fortify them as those kinds of learners and contributing citizens of our community.
Great.
So shout out to those kids. If you had a student who does not contribute to the world because they do not volunteer, they don't believe in volunteerism, or they don't believe in being a citizen, or they're not a good public speaker, or they're not a good writer, they just don't write well, does that mean they don't, do they fail? No, we help them develop the skills. Right, and I understand that you help them develop the skills, but what, what skills are, are you looking for every student to be an A-plus writer? Are you looking for every student to be an A-plus talker? Are you looking for every student to be an A-plus contributor to the world? Because that's cookie cutter, stepford lines children.
Yeah, no, no, you, you can't, no, it's, it's individualized to the best of their ability.
And that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Do not want us to put out cookie cutter kids who have our thought processes, our thoughts, our actions, they should have their own thought systems.
Exactly, that's where.
Stuff that we throw into their brains and you think this, you do this, and that's it.
Yeah, that's where that individualized, project-based, you know, things that they, they might create that could show, uh, an example of, um, learning and success.
And it can be individual, individualized to that student, so I, I do understand what Jamie's saying. Um, but I mean, I remember when this first rolled out and how this has been such a work in progress. Yes, and honestly, how it really, uh, to encompass the whole child, right, from early on, pre-school, which that universal pre-camps put that urge. You know, from the earliest ages, our students, um, are, um, constantly helping, so whether or not they're in elementary schools and it's the care and share drives and it's, you know, all these different ways to help the community and different opportunities, so it is a good building block system, but I do see what she's, I, I understand what she's trying to say, um, I don't think that that's where it's going to go, but maybe from, uh, some of the comments that Kate had made. Uh, so I, I think that that.
Well, I just don't want us to be putting out kids into the world who do not have their own thought process.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't want them to be told.
That's not, yeah.
Independent thinkers.
Yeah.
So, so I just, hold, okay, so we have four minutes until the public hearing starts, which we, actually, we did really well. Yeah, yeah, we really did. So, um, I'm going to cut, cut the, the conversation here, I would love to, to, to continue this, this, this conversation. I, I really think that this is an, an extremely important conversation and, and extremely important work that, uh, that, that's occurring, uh, that could help with the, you know, the whole direction of, of where the, the district is heading and laying that groundwork, so, so I think that's great and we'll make sure we, we do that. Um, what I did want to do, and we don't have time to do it, is I wanted to get just some feedback from you folks as to what you would. Um, what I did wanna do, and we don't have time to do it, is I wanted to get just some feedback from you folks as to what you would like to try to accomplish in our retreat that we're gonna do. Um, and there's a couple of slides in there. And so what I'm gonna ask is if, if you could just take a quick look at the two little slides that are in there. And if you could send any feedback to Jeff uh, about what you would like to see come out of the retreat. Um, and I put, I put three, three ideas. Um, and if you have a fourth or a fifth or a sixth, just, 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 you know, scribble it down and shoot the email to, to Jeff. And as we planned for that um, retreat session, we just wanted to have an opportunity to get your, get your feedback and direction. Um, so, and it can be, it can be in any, any, any direction and we'll then try to synthesize something together. For it. So with that, um, and I know administration reports, I know Amy was ready to give us a long administration report, but I think, I think maybe if, if everyone is okay with this, um, I would certainly be more than glad to entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay.
Just that one quick clarification thing, before we respond to you, could you do two things? Could you provide a reference? Where are we now? Is it the Board of Education or the District?
District, district, or, uh, it could be either or.
Well, I wonder like, what do you wanna respond to it?
I mean.
And the three words, what are we responding to, recovering, imagining? It's a specific.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Can you do?
I'll, I'll do that. I'll say, I'll send that out. Yep, okay, that sounds good. Thanks, Barry. Okay, so with that, we have a motion.
Yep.
With a second, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thanks very much.